As the sign says, so if the alarm goes, it's for real. There are three exits, one, two and three. Don't use the lift on your way out and we assemble across the road under the canopy outside Wade Rose. Can I ask everyone, please, to switch their phones to silent or off? Members of the public, I say, as a committee, we understand the matters under consideration tonight are quite emotive. However, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and indeed the committee, refrain from booing, cheering or any other form of disturbance. This is a meeting held in public, it's not a public meeting. I introduce the officers, both in front of them and to the side of me. On the top of the right there is Philip Estaden, next to her Louise Jandel, who's the head of Southern and Western Area Planning Committee Officers. Next is Chris Turner, followed by Flo Taylor. On my far right is Beth Howland-Smith, who's the Development Patrol Manager, and on my far left is Lewis Jones, our planning lawyer. Move on to the main business. Item one on the agenda, minutes of the last meeting held on the 11th of July. Assign those as a true record, please, members.
Three.
Thank you. Apologies for absence and declarations substitutions. Emma.
We have apologies from councillors Pat Frost, Stephen Hill, Martin Lear and Julia Potts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Decorations of interest.
We've received one before the meeting from councillor David Beeman in relation to item A1, which is 122 Upper Hill Road. He's declaring a non-procurnary interest as he's a member of Farnham Town Council and the Farnham Society. Both of these organisations have objected to this application and therefore feels on this occasion that the non-procurnary interest carries sufficient weight that he should withdraw from the chamber whilst it's being discussed.
And councillor Ward?
I think councillor Beeman wants to have a talk about that before I move, if that's okay, Mr Chairman.
Right, councillor Beeman.
Yes, it's not the item on 122 Hill Road I'm talking about, it's the one of Barnes 11 Old Park Lane that I'm concerned about, not...
Oh, apologies, which application was it, sorry?
It's the application...
B2.
B2, okay, apologies, I had the wrong information. Thank you.
Thank you very much, indeed. Councillor Ward?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just to be very specific, and I hope I'm not going to bore you, my declaration of interest is as follows, that I am a member of Farnham Town Council, who have commented on a number of these applications. I am also a member of their planning committee and when I have considered things sitting in their planning committee, I have made my decisions, recommendations on the evidence in front of me. I am approaching this meeting with an open mind to make decisions on the evidence put before me at this meeting and I have no preconception of how I shall vote. I am also a member of the Farnham Society, who has made comments, but I am in no way bound to agree with the comments that they have made. Thank you.
Thank councillor Ward.
I believe that applies about the Farnham Town Council members to all.
Yeah, thank you very much, Emma. Item four on the agenda, questions from the public, Emma?
None received.
Questions from members, Emma?
None received.
And moving on to item six, I'll ask Beth Howland-Smith, any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation since our last meeting?
Thank you, Chairman. Members will be aware of the recently published MPPF 2018. I just want to confirm that this new MPPF is reflected in the reports before you this evening. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, and moving on, performance against government targets, Louise Jandel.
Thank you, Chairman. As you can see from page seven of your agenda report this evening, in terms of speed, the department is performing excellently, both in terms of majors and non-majors. We are well exceeding the government targets in relation to speed. And in relation to quality, non-majors, we are also well below the maximum 10% figure of the government target. And in relation to majors, we are below the target and this figure has been coming down since the adoption of our local plan in February. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Moving on then, applications for planning permission. If there's any such inspection required as a result of the consideration of the applications at this meeting, they'll be held on the 25th of September at a time to be determined. Moving on now to agenda item A2, application A1 WA 2018, oblique 0152, 38 Brooklands Road, Farnham GU99BS, erection of two dwellings following demolition of the existing dwelling, outbuildings and garage. Chris Turner to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair. The site's located on the north-eastern side of Brooklands Way and south-eastern side of Brooklands Road. It's currently occupied by a single-storey wooden dwelling with a garden area. The site is L-shaped and existing access from Brooklands Road. Photograph one in the top right is looking south-west down through the existing access to the site. Photograph two on the middle right is looking north-east at the existing wooden dwelling. Photograph three in the bottom left is looking towards the croft from the existing wooden dwelling. Photo four on the bottom is looking towards the existing dwelling. In relation to plot two, the photograph one on the top right is looking north-east. Photograph two on the middle right is looking towards the south-west boundary of the croft. And photograph three is looking south-east towards Oakmead. Photograph four on the bottom is looking south-west towards Brooklands Way. You can see the proposed block plan. Plot one is located to the rear of numbers 40 and 42 Brooklands Road and plot two is currently where the existing garden area is. Plot one would be orientated north-west and would be one and a half storeys in height. It features two obscure glazed windows serving bathrooms on the north-west elevation and dormas serving bedrooms on the south-east elevation. Plot two would be orientated south and would be 1.5 storeys in height, which features dormas on the front and rear elevations. In conclusion, officers consider that the proposal for two dwellings would be acceptable and would not be materially harmful, would not have a materially harmful impact on the residential amenities of surrounding neighbours and would be acceptable in size and scale. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, location of development, highways and impact on traffic and parking, impact on trees, impact on the ancient woodland and effect on the SBA. The masses of judgment are design and impact on visual amenity, impact on residential amenity and the standard of accommodation and provision of amenity and place space. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Chris. This is subject to public speaking. I ask the objector, Tom Grillo, to come forward. You know the system, sir, you have four minutes from when you start speaking.
My name is Tom Grillo, I'm a chartered surveyor and I'm employed by the owner of the croft in Brooklands Way, which is next door to plot two. We object and have objected most strenuously and my firm wrote a letter back in April 30th, setting out all the elements of the policy at the time on which we think this application should fail. And I suppose one thing to say about the photographs and the plan, those are all the ones provided by the applicant and they are quite carefully taken to enhance the place. And I would urge that the committee should make a site visit here because the topography of the ground is significant and it doesn't really show in those photographs. We have sort of four principal objections. The first one is the window in the principal room, and it shows on one of those photographs with the hedge cut round it, on the south-east side of the croft. That window there, that goes into a principal living room and by building within 1.99 metres, if one reads the plan correctly, of that, there is going to be a complete obliteration of the outlook and there won't be much natural light into that. There is going to be a blank wall in front of it, which is going to be at least one story high with above it a sloping roof and some windows outlooking in the direction of the croft. So we think that is not, doesn't really comply with your policies. The second point I have is that the existing single-storey detached building at the top of the mound is a derelict building and has not been used as a dwelling for a great length of time. It has been used by a man who was interested in radio communication and occupied and used by him on a daily basis, so there's very little traffic, very little activity in that part. And it is only a very shallow, small building, a single story. The proposal is to put on that site a very much larger, two-storey building, alright, one and a half if you argue, but it's effectively two stories because there are going to be rooms in the roof with all the gable windows. And it is shown on the drawing, you can see how much bigger it is than the existing building. And the principal entrance is on the south side, well, south-east if you will, and that is shown there with two large windows facing down the hill towards the croft. It is in a very much higher position than the croft and so although those will have opaque glass and enforce that if you will, it still will be a dominant feature so far as the croft is concerned. Item three...
I'd ask you to draw to a close.
Right, well, the environmental implications, we have a stream there, the runoff from this extra building will go into that watercourse. The traffic, you say that cars should be able to enter and leave in forward gear, that doesn't, is not provided in this place at all and there is no place for turning. And then you've got the Thames Basin Heath Special Protection Area, which is in within five kilometres.
Could you finish, Mr Grillo, please?
I will finish, and that is the MPPF, and there you are.
Thank you very much indeed. Just make one point to members, and I think Chris is going to make the other one. We have had a site visit on this site, called by councillor Hodge, I think, some weeks ago, and I think, Chris, you've probably got a comment on the photographs.
And the false glass was taken by myself on an independent site visit.
No, beg your pardon.
Thank you very much indeed. Members, I ask you to step forward. Councillor Hodge?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm the ward councillor for this area and I called this in because there are 13 letters of objection covering a range of issues and I really wanted it to have a fore hearing before the committee. I have particular concerns in relation to the effect the development might have on the adjacent properties, particularly to the croft in Brooklands Way, which lies to the south-west and will essentially be flanked on two sides by the development. The croft itself is set down low in the landscape and has a north-facing back garden set into the hillside. It suffers from very low light levels and relies heavily on a south-east facing window to capture morning light for the kitchen and dining and breakfast areas. Plot two will all but remove this light, as it is just 1.8 metres away, and will leave this room only with a light source from the north-facing windows. Plot one to the north will further diminish available light as the property will be closer to the boundary and higher with the gable end facing the croft. Paragraph two on page 20 acknowledges this, but goes on to say that officers are satisfied that the loss of light would not be materially harmful. Well, I strongly dispute this and at the moment I'm strongly minded to vote against this application. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I recall beginning of May we went on the site visit for this and I remember, I think that we were all quite struck by, as councillor Hodge has said, the relationship between the proposal on site one particularly and the closeness of site two to the window. Now, I know we were told then that there was a good reason why we could not fail on sticking a two-storey building outside of a living room window. I think it was something to do with that living room having a secondary light source from the north. I don't think I really understand that that's, you know, a good reason to allow this to be built when you consider the overlooking of the proposed building on site one and the loss of amenity for the owner of the croft. So I am minded to, I think, refuse on those grounds, I just think this is too overbearing for the neighbour. But my concern, as Mr Grillo said himself, I have a concern, which I echoed in an email earlier to members and to officers in respect of the claim that there's an appropriate assessment, the law says an appropriate assessment must contain the bird numbers, and in the absence of bird numbers, it was a French case, or a case against the French courts, which means we don't have an appropriate assessment here by the definition of the law, and of course there is no assessment of the mitigation. I'm very disappointed that we have not been advised in advance of this. Now, these applicants have come back exactly what's been done, because I see that nothing that has been done to, other than simply ignore the Sweetman ruling. And I think we should go, if necessary, into exempt session, but by virtue of Regulation Nine of the Habitat's Regulations, which require that we consider habitats, that we should discuss this properly, I would like to know, very simple question, do we have an appropriate assessment containing the bird numbers and containing an assessment of the mitigation in accordance with my email? Thank you very much.
Was that the email at 16:55 this afternoon?
Yes, it's the one which echoes everything I've been saying for the past 10 years, which has been ignored and which, Chairman, pointed out that what Waverley and this administration have been saying to us and advising for the past 10 years is incorrect and unlawful. Thank you.
Do you wish to come in at this stage? I'll turn to our planning lawyer.
Thank you, Chairman. The council has, in fact, carried out an appropriate assessment for the purposes of the local plan for the Thames Basin Heath Spar, and that assessment concluded that by virtue of the mitigation that's provided for in the avoidance strategy, housing growth will not affect the integrity of the spar. Officers are satisfied that the avoidance measures have been appropriately assessed in accordance with the Sweetman judgment. It's not necessary, nor is it required by Sweetman, to reassess the mitigation on a case-by-case basis. Although monitoring of impacts on the spar is being carried out, it's not necessary to revisit that evidence that underpins the avoidance strategy. That's for either this application or other applications tonight, because there have been no substantive changes in circumstances which warrant doing so. The council carries out appropriate assessments for individual applications in order for it to be assured that adverse effects have been avoided in accordance with the avoidance strategy and in accordance with the Sweetman ruling. As you know, the Sweetman ruling ensures that mitigation can only be considered at the appropriate assessment stage, and that is what we have done for this application and the others on tonight's agenda. Councillor Hyman, you are entitled to disagree with the officers regarding the effectiveness of the avoidance strategy and the mitigation contained therein, but as an officer, I don't agree with your interpretation of Sweetman and I don't agree with your assertion that the council is acting unlawfully in its application. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Lewis. Councillor Coburn?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, this is a difficult one, I was also on the site visit, remember it well and remember walking around. It's a site that's crying out for some development, I mean, of that there's no doubt, the existing building, shall we say, I mean, is old, decrepit and whatever, and there is certainly space for a dwelling, of that there is absolutely no doubt. The question is whether there's space for two, and I know when we were on site, the issue on site was the second dwelling and the effect it had on the croft. And it is very much on balance here, and I'm looking, or hoping for some more guidance at some point from the officers or from fellow members of the committee, because I find this very, very difficult. It's an extension out, isn't it, towards the boundary, if I remember it correctly, with the window, and then you've got the window at the front. And given the proximity, when it was an orchard, part of the garden of the previous one, then obviously you could cut, as they did, it was certainly before this photograph was taken, to enjoy the light, and that will certainly be removed as a result of this building. Whether that's unreasonable, this is the test that we have to apply, whether or not, you know, we can prevent the second build is a difficult issue, and I'm still swithering on this one. Certainly support aid dwelling on this site. I am still in two minds as to whether the effect on the croft is too great to warrant agreeing with the officers on this one, so look forward to hearing one or two of the other people that were on the site visit, or other people anyway, on the committee would like to suggest. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Ward?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I notice that the town council has objected to this on the grounds of overdevelopment and not in accordance with the Farnham neighbourhood plan, and I have to say, I attach considerable weight to that and even more having seen the photographs and the diagram. I note that the plot one new house will be considerably larger and higher than the original and that's not causing me too much concern, but I notice that plot two will be higher still and is also on a higher elevation than the nearby house, and that causes me considerable concern. Whenever I read one of these planning documents, as soon as I see the words obscured, glazing, alarm bells go off, because obscured glazing generally means, oh my gosh, we know it shouldn't be here, but we'll sort of cover it up and carry on. When I get on to non-opening windows below 1.7 metres, I'm afraid I get even more concerned. To me, I agree with councillor Coburn that there is certainly a room for aid dwelling in here, but from what I've seen and heard at this meeting and looking through the report carefully, I cannot support this application for putting a second house there. It's clearly being rammed in and, interesting comment, the objector made, more or less saying how you're going to enforce all these obscure glazed windows, and I'm sure they'll be there when it's built, but they may not be there a lot longer. But on the whole, it's too near the other house, it's overbearing on the other house, all these glazed windows are, I think, synonymous of the fact that really people are generally pretty uncomfortable with it. And to wind up on my favourite topic, I noticed that we've got four or more conditions about bats and birds, but our standard condition about electric vehicle charging points, according to Surrey guidance, again seems to be missing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to come back on a few of the points you've just made there, the proposed building would be 0.5 metres higher than the adjoining property at the croft. In relation to the obscure glazed window, which is this one here, that one does serve a stairwell, and we are satisfied as officers that that could be satisfactorily enforced by condition. Going back to the point about the window in the neighbouring property, which is just here, as Chris has said, this is a secondary window, there is another window along the rear. Members should also take into consideration that a two-metre-high wall could be erected under permitted development rights, and whilst the dwelling would inevitably be higher than that, it would be further separated and given the presence of that window at the rear, it is officers' advice that this wouldn't be sufficiently harmful as to warrant a refusal. And finally, in relation to electric vehicle charging points, should members consider that this is necessary, then that is a condition that can be added to the decision by members this evening. Thank you.
I think generally, Louise, members are insisting on electric charging points on all new developments, the flattered ones are another problem that we well know. So I just move my own thoughts, you know. I see plot one as totally acceptable, the law serum is, if you don't have plot two built, and you have got the overbearing nature, but you have room to turn cars round so you don't have people reversing into a road, so just a small point. Councillor Hyman, before I move to the recommendation, you have a new point?
It's a response, Chairman, because I didn't get an answer to my question as to whether we have any bird population data, which I haven't seen. We have to have an appropriate assessment containing bird population data and completes, and I quoting from the judgment, which I can understand the council's reticence to abide by it, but it must contain complete, precise and definitive findings and conclusions capable of removing all reasonable scientific doubt as the effect of the proposed work on the European site. And of course, you know, imaginary mitigation from an imaginary car park by the Six Bells is going, you're not going to provide that. Will officers, I want a definitive statement from officers, somebody who's willing to take responsibility here, Chairman, if I may, I want them to tell me where I can find the assessment of that mitigation and the bird numbers, because they must be in the documents that have been put online for us to see and we should have it available to us. Is it available for me now or not?
Lewis, could you offer us some advice, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate your want for that information, and I'm sure if we took it offline, that could be provided to you, but I can't give you those specifics at the moment.
We can't grant consent lawfully then, Chairman?
Wrong.
What I can say is the council, time and time again, have said that they are confident in the effectiveness of the avoidance strategy. We have Natural England's endorsement of that strategy and the mitigation contained in that strategy, and we think... in that strategy, and we think that it is compliant with the relevant case law and the directive. But of course, if you have specific questions, we'll be happy to answer them outside of the committee room. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
But chairman, can I perhaps ask, I know we haven't got Mrs. Sims here, but somebody else might be able to answer it, because Mrs. Sims wrote to us on the 17th of May to all members and said that, and I quote, "Going forward, consideration of mitigation will need to occur at the full assessment stage," otherwise known as appropriate assessment. She said, "An updated approach to consideration of mitigation will follow, and the amended approach will also apply to the Wildon Heath." And she said, "I will keep you fully updated of discussions on this," and we're being told that this information does exist, but we can't have it, and we've got to make these decisions blind when quite clearly the judgment says that we would be acting ultraveris to grant consent to any of these applications tonight in the absence of that information, chairman.
Thank you very much.
And Natural England and this council have been proved wrong.
Thank you. I think we've heard from the planning lawyer on law. I don't know if Louise Yandell wants to come back in at this point.
Yeah, I would just like to provide some reassurance, really, to the committee that the appropriate assessment has been carried out on this particular scheme. Natural England have been consulted, and they are the expert body, and it's not reasonable to make a decision contrary to the experts where there isn't sufficient evidence to do so. And in this instance, we are satisfied as officers that that appropriate assessment has been carried out, and Natural England are also satisfied that the appropriate assessment carried out by us is satisfactory. We are confident that the proposal does not have an unacceptable impact on the SPA, and for that reason, our recommendation is for approval. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, indeed. You move to the recommendation, please. This is on page... Get there in a minute. Recommendation is on page 27, 28, 29, and 30, the informative's on 31. Those in favour of the recommendation, please show. Those against the recommendation?
Unanimous.
Therefore, I need an alternative. councillor Coburn.
The permission be refused, chairman.
Thank you. A second, please. councillor Hyman, thank you. Reasons, please.
Overbearing and turning circle, I think, to loss of amenity, I think that would come under its neighbourhood plan.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, councillor Hodge, I did miss you there.
That's okay, chairman. Thank you very much, chairman. How about the proposed development, by reason of its height, mass and scale, and proximity to the adjacent property, will have a harmful and unacceptable impact on the amenity of that property?
Louise.
If I could just add that you would need to set out the specific reason for the impact on the amenity, so having regard to your discussions earlier, I would add, due to loss of light and overbearing impact, and then I would also add in the relevant policies, which would be policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, policy TD1 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2018, and there will be a relevant MPPF paragraph, but if you would delegate that to officers, I'm not quite up to speed with all the paragraphs of the new MPPF yet, but that can be added in as well. Thank you.
councillor Coburn.
I think it's contrary to FNP1.2 in terms of design, in fact.
Thank you. Members, you've heard the recommendation for refusal and the reasons. Sorry, Louise, you want to come back? Carry on. And you've heard the recommendations for refusal. Those in favour of refusal, please show.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much, indeed. Permission is refused. Moving on now to A2. Yeah, okay. WA 2017 1848 122, Upper Hale Road, Farnham, GU90J. H, erection of building providing eight flats associated parking, landscaping following demolition of the existing office building. And we just wait a minute, Flo. Thank you, Flo. It's all yours.
Thank you, chairman. Just before we start, if you want to turn to the updated sheet, just a short update that an additional representation has been received, which confirms that there would be bin space for the requisite number of containers for recycling has been received. And then just an additional update, site layout, elevation and floor plans included within the agenda report on pages 35 to 36 have been amended to include an enlarged bin store area. The correct plan numbers were included in the plan numbers condition, however, the images were not updated, but the correct images will be used during this presentation. The site is located to the north-east of Upper Hale Road in a backland position between 122A, a backland position behind 122A, and it's within the developed area of Farnham. The site is surrounded by residential development and a builder's yard and parking area to the east in these locations. The site currently comprises a two-storey building with lawful use as offices. Pre-approval was granted earlier this year for the change of use of the building from residential to offices to provide four one-bedroom apartments and one two-bedroom apartment. This pre-approval application established the principle of the loss of the existing office use on the site, and given this fallback position, it would be unreasonable for officers to object on the loss of the commercial floor space. This aerial photograph shows the site outlined in red and the surrounding development. Looking at the site photos, this site shows images of the existing building. As you can see, it is of little visual merit, has an area of flat roof at first floor level. In the bottom right corner, you can see the relationship of the rear of the current building with the garden of 120A, and how the existing building extends beyond the garden boundary. You can also see from the photos how the site slopes upwards towards the north. This slide shows how the current building is seen from Upper Hale Road. As you can see, there is a row of dwellings behind, between Upper Hale Road and the site, and the site is therefore not in a prominent position. The image on the right shows the current poor relationship between the dwelling at 120A and the existing building. The current proposal would be set so it's not closer to the existing dwellings at the southern end than the existing two-storey section of the building. This image just shows the scale of the existing building on the site and the location relative to other existing buildings. This image of the proposed block plan shows the proposed building in the same location as the existing building, but extending further to the north-east alongside the parking area and builder's yard I pointed out earlier. To the north and west are eight parking spaces, which are in accordance with the council's parking standards for the proposed eight one-bedroom units. The access would be in the same location as the current access to the site from Upper Hale Road, and acceptable to the highway authority, subject to conditions. Bin storage would be located to the south of the building, adjacent to the private garden to the ground floor flat at the south of the building. The proposed building would be two-storey with a low roof with a greater height towards the centre than at either end, and would make use of the slope of the site. Officers consider that the scale, bulk and mass of the proposed building would be similar to that already on site, but note that the proposed building would be materially longer. The proposed building would be of a contemporary design with a gentle repeating monopitch roof form. Materials would include timber, stock bricks and timber windows. Due to the setback within the site and narrow entrance width, officers consider that the proposed building would not materially impact on the appearance of the street scene. The proposed floor plans show the layout of the eight one-bedroom units with four units at ground floor and four units at first floor level. The ground floor units would have private amenity spaces to their front, with one having it to the side as well. The proposed mix would not accord with the indicative requirements of the Sma 2015, providing only one-bedroom units. However, officers consider smaller units appropriate to this site where amenity space is limited. The units would all meet the space standards for one-bedroom, one-person units, and two of the units would meet the standard for one-bedroom, two-person units. Notwithstanding, given the lack of current policy in respect of the standards, officers consider that the proposal would be acceptable in this regard. The proposal would include a very similar spread of unobscured glazing to habitable rooms at first floor level as the existing building on the site, and as such, officers are satisfied that the proposal would not result in a material increase in harm from Turning to the determining issues, the majority of which I've already touched on, the matters for judgment for consideration are the impact on visual amenity, the impact on residential amenity, the standard of accommodation and amenity space, and housing mix and density. Turning to the officer recommendation, that remains as set out on pages 55 to 62 of the agenda report, with recommendation A being that, subject to the applicant entering into an appropriate legal agreement to secure the provision of contributions towards Sang at Farnham Park, and subject to conditions and informatives, permission be granted, and recommendation B, that in the event that the requirements of recommendation A are not met within six months of the date of the resolution to grant permission, that permission be refused. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, Flo. Again, public speaking, I ask the supporter of the scheme, Matt Taylor, to come forward. You have four minutes, sir.
Thank you, chairman. Good evening, members. I'm here representing the applicant, and I'm a member of the RTPI. We're pleased to present this application to you, which you have, as you've already heard from your officer, is recommended to be granted planning permission, subject to the resolution of the Section 106 agreement, securing appropriate financial contributions. This application has been with the council for some length of time, during which proactive negotiation has been carried out with your officers and various stakeholders to achieve what we consider as a very acceptable design solution. The site is currently occupied by an attractive and a neighbourly commercial office building, as you've seen, which is very close to the rear of several properties located along Upper Hale Road. The applicant seeks to demolish this incongruous building and provide a high-quality design-led residential development, which would be more appropriate in use to the residential location. Earlier iterations of the proposed scheme resulted in various letters of objection from neighbouring residents, and a few of those concerns were echoed by your officers. In response, the applicant invited all of the immediately surrounding neighbouring residents, eight households in total, to discuss the proposal with them and suggest design changes. As part of this process, the applicant sought to visit all of those neighbouring properties to ensure that the revised design did not result in any material impact upon the amenity enjoyed by those residents. The revised plan stepped the new building away from the backs of the houses along Upper Hale Road, much improving the existing relationship. The revised design is also now much lower, and the varied use of materials and the gentle repeating monopitch roof significantly reduces the impact of the building compared with the almost monolithic appearance of the current office building. The current scheme before you, which now has the full support of your officers, is therefore the result of conscientious consultation with surrounding residents. We are pleased to highlight to you that, following consultation with the neighbours and the submissions of the revised design, not a single resident has objected to the proposal in writing. Whilst the parish council have maintained an objection, that solely relates to a misunderstanding regarding that the site, they consider the site falls within 400-metre buffer zone of the SPA. We've actually liaised with Natural England, as has your officers, and deduced that the access to the site is outside of that buffer zone, and therefore, Natural England have confirmed that the development would not affect the integrity of the SPA, given the mitigation proposed and the agreement to the appropriate assessment. The proposal is an innovative scheme, as I hope you'll agree, which is of high-quality architectural solution to provide eight attractive one-bedroom units. It's a highly effective use of this brownfield site, which is an approach that you'll be aware is advocated within the new MPPF published last month. And in particular, these smaller units are evidently lacking in the local area, and therefore, the applicant is very keen to offer these smaller units to first-time buyers seeking their first step on the property ladder, who otherwise might find themselves priced out in this location. We strongly believe that this is a high-quality development, which is the support of your officers, and no objections from neighbouring residents. We therefore politely ask that you support your officer's recommendation and grant planning permission, and we also confirm that the applicant is committed to agreeing the Section 166 contributions towards the Sang. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Members. councillor Ward.
I'd like to speak a bit later, Mr. Chairman, but could we first? The 400-metre from the SPA line, it doesn't appear anywhere in the report, which I really find quite disturbing and rather upsetting. Could someone please, on let us say the location plan, show me exactly where this 400-metre line is? And could we, as a matter of course, put it on all future applications that might be of a similar ilk?
Louise, are you taking that one, or what?
That's not an answer to my question. I would like to see on that diagram where the boundary is and how much of that development is within 400 metres. I'm afraid a distance to the edge is just quite useless.
Louise.
Thank you, chairman. So the building itself, the building is within the 400-metre buffer zone of the SPA. Natural England have confirmed that because the entrance to the site is further than 400 metres to the SPA, which is of course where occupants would leave the site in order to go elsewhere, including the SPA, should they be so inclined, because that entrance is over 400 metres from the SPA, that is acceptable for their purposes, and as such, the development has bought into the Farnham Park Sang, and an adequate contribution would be secured via the legal agreement, which has yet to been signed. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Hodge.
Thank you, chairman. I know the site very well in Upper Hale. It's very tucked away, you really wouldn't know it was there unless you went looking for it. In that regard, it would have, the development would have absolutely no effect on the street scene whatsoever, and I think it's a rather good use of the space, to be honest, and I love the contemporary design of it. We need starter homes, affordable starter homes in Upper Hale, and I think it's a good scheme. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Fraser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am the local member that called this one in, being councillor for Upper Hale, and I've lived in the buffer zone for all the years that I've lived in Upper Hale. I can testify that, in fact, helping Louise, the 400-metre line would appear to pass through that very meagre bell mouth at the access, in front of 122A. Lower down, further to the south, there, that's where the line passes through. In other words, 99.9% of the site area is within the buffer zone. When I became councillor three years ago and I associated myself with planning committees, Mr. Chairman, you will know that I took a very great interest in the SPA, matters of Sang, and the 400-metre buffer zone came up many times. I think I went through the same process of checking that our planning department had done, and I was told by the officer at the other end, who I believe represented Natural England, in a slightly patronising manner, that the object of the regulations was to prevent any further construction of dwellings within the buffer zone. That is the object of the regulation. Now we hear there's a clever planning trick, that if, in fact, the site has an access... Now we hear there's a clever planning trick, that if, in fact, the site has an access that's just outside the buffer zone, then everything is okay. And this presumably is because anyone exercising their dog and going up onto the SPA to do so, and many do, will have to come out through that access onto the Upper Hale Road. I can tell you from experience of living in the buffer zone that the main predators of the birds on the SPA are not dogs, but cats. And having eight new houses built within the buffer zone could imply we've got eight new cats. They won't go out through the entrance in an obedient manner on a lead, they'll go over the fence at the other end, which is about 100 metres closer to the SPA than the entrance. I think this should be enough to warrant declining this application, but I will carry on if I may. It doesn't comply with the Farnham Design Statement, it does not comply, in my view, with our neighbourhood plan. It is constricted and tight, and if we're going to have cheap, affordable houses, I see no reason why they should be so small and cramped. The design, I should be careful here, Mr. Chairman, because I've been criticised before for being rude about architects and architecture, but the design is not very good, and in fact, in your words, planning team, it's of little visual merit, in my opinion. In a village that is largely brick, and red brick at that, it chooses to use a light stock, it chooses to use timber panelling, which is totally non-vernacular, it chooses to use a single ply fancy roofs scale. In a village that has almost uniquely forty-five, forty-degree, forty-five-degree cambered tile and slate roofing, it is a poor neighbour visually, and it's, in my opinion, it is only my opinion, it is an eyesore. When it comes to the traffic, it's got eight parking spaces for the eight, which is probably comprised...
Can you get to the end of it fairly quickly, please?
Yeah, I'm coming towards it, Mr. Chairman.
You've had four minutes.
I didn't know I was restricted four minutes. I believe this scheme, along with many others that have been built in Upper Hale and Heathend in the last few years, will lead to cars emerging in rear gear, not in forward gear. It would appear, as the other schemes did, that there are eight parking spaces with the turning area. But in fact, what happens, someone comes along with two cars, and no one can turn round, so everybody has to come out backwards.
Thank you. Council Kerber?
Thank you very much. I'll try not to use up my whole four minutes, and therefore, we'll even it out eventually. I feel a little bit, as I've said before in this chamber, that we're between a rock and a hard place on this one. Instinctively, I go along with councillor Fraser, it's within 400 metres of the SPA, but I also know we have to make reasonable decisions, and Natural England, who is the arbiter on this, has said that this is acceptable because of where the entrance is, and I accept their advice. Terms of materials and design, we have councillor Hodge, who thinks it's rather exciting and perfectly acceptable, councillor Fraser, who can't really think of anything worse, and this is why design is a very difficult issue and one that we're not allowed to make important decisions on, because it is subjective. I think the standard of accommodation is fine, I agree it's going to be totally hidden anyway. I'm always worried about parking and turning, because, as councillor Fraser said, the last thing you want is anybody to add to our already crowded roads in reverse gear. But, you know, I have to look at that and hope that there's enough turning circle for most of the cars to access and egress in forward gear. But on balance, as I say, it's not instinctively what I would support in this particular area, but given where we are and given the advice we have, I think that on balance, this is probably an acceptable and, in some ways, rather exciting development, because, again, we do need small units, and I think these are acceptable on balance. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Just flicking through the conditions and knowing council ward's comments, I missed it. Condition number? Okay, I'll look for it again, but, yeah, okay. Thank you very much indeed. Council Hyman?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, clarify this, things would be so much easier if there were an appropriate assessment, wouldn't it, Chairman? Because councillor Ward wouldn't have needed to ask the question about the distances, he would have had it in an assessment, wouldn't he? And the 400 metres, anybody who was, I mean, it's simply farcical, as councillor Fraser really is saying, because cats don't use the entrance. But the inspector at the South East Plan Regional Spatial Strategy Examination in Public Thames Plate and Heath Special Protection Area Technical Sessions in 2006, 2007, came to the conclusion, quite rightly, that cats, the evidence shows cats roam a damn site further than 400 metres, in fact, up to a mile, 1.5, 1.6 kilometres, and he put that into his final report, as someone here should know, and that, he said it should be a one kilometre as a minimum as a buffer zone, but that was completely ignored by the councils, including Waverley, because, of course, that was, would have been rather inconvenient. So the 400 metres is, by the by, it's a moot point. The point is, we don't have an appropriate assessment offering to let me see one another time is not good enough, it has to be available to us, or it has to have been available to us so that we could have gone through it. And just simply saying Natural England says it's acceptable, well, yeah, but the ruling in Sweetman said Natural England have been wrong for the past 10 years and the council, the approach taken, so, you know, don't expect us. I'd like some humility, actually. I think the residents, particularly Farnham, who have put up with this for so long, can expect some humility from people who have had a court case that proves that they've been wrong. So, Chairman, I will be voting against this on that ground. I apologise, actually, to the developer in this, because I tend to, although I take councillor Fraser's point in terms of it's not vernacular, this is hidden, and councillor Hodge is correct inasmuch as, I think, well, my own interpretation would be, if we're going to put this sort of building somewhere, this is probably the best place to put it, but where it can't be seen. It's not to my liking, is what I'm saying, but I know nothing about design. I would be happy if, you know, democracy says that this needs to be built and should be built, then I would hope that the developer would resubmit with Article 64, Regulation 64, application for, with imperative means of overriding public interest, on the basis we need some housing and affordable housing. But we need to do it properly, and that imposes, the habitat system imposes a different set of rules by which we judge these applications, so we can't judge it on that, because that's what we haven't got, we haven't got that in front of us now, on the basis that we have to have, as Mrs. Sims told us, that we will need a new way of approaching this. We haven't got a new way of approaching the SPA issue. I'm going to be voting against this one as well, simply on the matter of law, Chairman, and I would invite the developer to perhaps come back with it at another time, when our council has sorted out a lawful approach to the habitats issue. I'd like to know where this, if there's an appropriate assessment, please put it in front of us now so that we can know that we are acting lawfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Pritchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't see any in the report, but I'm flickering through my iPad, haven't quite got used to it yet. Where it says about the quality of the build, because I'm concerned with the soundproofing between the different units, I think eight is far too much. I think it, to me, it looks like battery hens, it really does, squeezed in such a small area with no, very little storage, and it just worries me that there's bedrooms that back onto living areas of the other properties, and I just want to know what's the quality of the soundproofing between all units, because I live in an area that has made to very high standards for soundproofing, and it's not good enough, and I just want to know what's the quality of this. Thank you.
Louise?
Thank you. So, soundproofing on new buildings is a building regulations requirement, so it would be controlled by the building regulations when the building is built. If councillors are particularly concerned about soundproofing, then we could recommend, well, you could recommend a condition to require full details of the soundproofing to be submitted and approved to the local planning authority prior to the commencement of development, and we could assess that, that soundproofing as part of that process. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is here.
Yeah, if I could just come back on that, sorry.
Okay, yes.
I would like that, if possible. I mean, I'm, I just, I think there's some properties there that don't back on to each other. If you look at first floor, on the left-hand side, you've got two bedrooms next to each other, and then on the, on the right-hand side, you've got the living, you know, next to the bedrooms, and I just think that they're quite different, so I would want that if we were to go ahead with this planning application.
Do you have a second there, please? A second, do we need one? Okay, fine, thank you. Council Nuzia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Apart from the big meow, I don't find any other problems regarding it. I totally support councillor Hodge's, the design is beautiful, that's how the one apartments, single-bedroom apartments are made. I take councillor Pritchard's point on sound, yes, I will be concerned a little bit about it, but apart from that, the developer done a beautiful job on designing the rooms, that's how the one-bedroom flat is, and as a student, I've lived in them, and this is much better than that. I would love to live as a uni student in there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Beeman?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just a simple question. Is this the first time that we've had a planning application where virtually all the development is within the SPA buffer zone, and it's just excluded by the entrance?
No idea, but it's, this application is on its own merit. Council Ward, do you want to come back, something new?
I initially said I'd like to ask a question, which was what I started off on, but I actually totally agree with councillor Hodge, I think this is well-hidden away and something that's really needed in the right sort of area. My problem clearly is its location. I always have a little difficulty with words, and perhaps the officers and I slightly disagree on the definition of experts. Natural England are the statutory consultee, but that doesn't make any graduate who applies for a job and pops in the door an expert. We have this with highways quite a lot, too, and we see the devastation that they put on our roads. But they are the statutory consultee, and yes, we have to take notice of them, but this idea that the exit is a couple of metres outside the SPA and therefore it's all fine, or outside the 400-metre zone, it's all fine, I really find quite strange. I think sometimes we have to use our common sense and our imagination. I mean, looking at what Natural England have said, basically, we could build a thousand homes within 400 metres, in the 400-metre zone, put a huge great wall around them, build a little bridle path out so it was one metre outside the 400, and say, yippee, this is it, this is not having no effect on the SPA whatsoever. Frankly, I find it ridiculous. So I have a very difficult decision to make on balance, I totally agree with councillor Hodge, but I find this nonsense with the one metre outside, inside the gateway totally unbelievable.
Thank you, Chairman. The application is for the change of use of an existing hotel guesthouse to a house of multiple occupancy for occupation by not more than ten persons. The applicant has set out that the house would be occupied by students who would attend a university for the creative arts in Farnham. This is supported by a letter from the university. The application comprises the basement, ground floor, and first floor of the existing building. There is an existing second floor flat, but this does not form part of the application. The application site is located on the corner of Fergrove Hill and Arthur Road in the Farnham Fergrove Ward in Farnham. The application site is surrounded by residential properties of varying sizes and architectural styles. No external alterations are proposed as part of the application. As such, no elevations were required or have been provided. These slides show the floor plans. Some internal alterations have been proposed in order to satisfy HMO regulations and to form the bedrooms. So turning to the photographs, photograph A to the top left, that's taken from the north-east, looking towards number twenty-two. Photograph B is taken from the south-west, looking towards the rear of number twenty-two across the existing car park. Photograph C is taken from the north-east, looking towards the corner of Fergrove Hill and Arthur Road. D is taken from the north-west, looking towards the corner of the building and up Fergrove Hill, and E is taken from the south-east, looking across the entrance of number twenty-four Fergrove Hill, the neighbouring property. In conclusion, officers consider that the proposal would accord with the development plan policies and is recommended for approval on this basis. In terms of matters of principle and technical opinion, drawing on two in particular, officers can comment as follows. In terms of highways and car parking, the proposal would provide eleven car parking spaces, which is considered sufficient for ten independent occupants. The county highway authority have reviewed the application and have concluded that the application would not have a severe impact on the safety and operation of the adjoining public highway, subject to a number of conditions. In terms of noise, the proposal is considered to be no more harmful than existing properties on Fergrove Hill, or materially more harmful than the existing hotel use or other residential uses. In terms of matters of judgment, members are now asked to consider the impact on residential amenity and the design and impact on visual amenity. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Philip. Members? Sorry, Council Ward?
Right, I put my hand up when you were looking the other way, Chairman. I'm delighted that there's some accommodation for UCA people there, but I will return to my hobby horse of electric charging, and let's make it easy for them to be environmentally happy.
Council Kerber?
Yeah, I mean, it's almost an ombre in this one, isn't it? There's no changes to the outside at all, and it's it's been a struggling hotel. Those of you know the the history of this hotel. And, you know, providing the the students behave themselves, and I'm sure they will, I don't think too many will have cars, but, you know, if if they do, as you say, we'll encourage them to have the right sort of car, if they can afford it. But, you know, it's it's an ideal place for them in terms of being able to walk to all the facilities and get into college. So really, I think they'd be very difficult to find grounds on which to refuse this one.
councillor Nuzia.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I totally support councillor Coburn's review regarding it, and I would recommend it as well, because there are no changes in it. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Pritchard.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, we all know what the reputation of the hotel has had in the past, but there we go. Can I, is it definitely students? It would be definitely students that'd be occupying this?
There is.
No, we can't guarantee that it would be students. It wouldn't be reasonable to restrict the accommodation to a certain type of person, so it could be anyone living there. The applicants have indicated that they would let it to students, but that isn't unfortunately within our control. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr Chairman, I've got a few questions. The other question is, if it's ten occupants, so obviously it's ten bedrooms, what if someone was to meet someone, and does that mean they would have to leave? Would that be part of a tenancy agreement that they just could not cohabit with someone else?
Yeah. councillor Coburn, I think, wants to come in here.
Yeah, I mean, there's strict rules governing HMOs. We have masses of them in the town, but they're all in Dollar Strive area. This would be one. We have lots of student accommodation, but the HMOs are pretty well governed, shall we say, you know, and there are restrictions on all of this. But, I mean, the reason that the students tend to live in them is that, you know, for that sort of accommodation, it's ideal for a student. It doesn't mean that a young professional couldn't live there. On the whole, you know, getting ten young professionals who want to share a house is pretty difficult, I would have thought. You know, they tend to go for the smaller property, and the HMOs, the larger ones, tend to go to students who thoroughly enjoy their communal life.
The only reason why I say, Mr Chairman, is because we we have got letters of objection from local residents that worries that ten is is still too many. And and, you know, that what clientele will be, will come to that is, but then, you know, that's not really something for planning. But I I think we just need to be wary that local residents, who I represent, are not too happy with this, and I just think that the members should just bear that in consideration.
I think there might be less occupants of the HMO than a hotel. Just a thought. councillor Hyman.
Yes, noises at night and things. But I'm a hundred yards away, so I couldn't be able to hear it from where I am. Notice my my local shop, obviously. It's near my local shop, as I say, and it's, I don't really have any objection at all to this use, but of course, what we've got here is the the SBA issue tangled up in it, and I'm rather than, I I don't want to vote against this because I think it's a good thing for us to do. I don't want, I should vote against it in terms of it being unlawful, but there's no appropriate assessment. I've got nothing to guide me on it, and I'm going to abstain on this and sit on the fence because if other members are minded to feel that it's okay, the absence of an appropriate assessment, well, if they put it back through as a Article six four application, it would clearly go through. It would be pointless wasting everybody's time to 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 object, so I'm going to abstain on this one. It is a very difficult legal position on this in terms of the spa. There's no appropriate assessment. We have to refuse consent by law, but I don't know that there's actually any real increase in occupation, so I'm going to abstain.
Thank you very much, indeed. Other than the electric charging points, Louise, do you want to say anything for move the recommendation?
Yeah, on this one, there is actually a condition, condition four, which requires the electric vehicle charging points, so we're satisfied that that would be secured as part of any approval. Thank you, Chairman.
Move the recommendation, then. Recommendation that subject conditions one five and informative one six plus the, no, that's it, permission be granted. Those in favour, please show.
Eight.
Eight. Abstentions?
It would be seven and two.
Thank you very much, indeed. Permission is granted. Moving on to item B one.
Thank you, Philippa.
WA twenty eighteen zero five five nine, workshop thirty-eight the street, recollection GU ten four PR, erection of a new dwelling, use class C three, following demolition of the existing vehicle workshop, use class B two, and creation of an enlarged garden to existing dwelling. Chris Turner to introduce this one.
Thank you, Chair. The site's located to the rear of thirty-eight the street and comprises an outbuilding or workshop located with an existing parking court. There's a, there's some single story wooden sheds adjacent to this workshop which run around, run along the boundary with number nine bare, bare wood. The land slopes downwards, downwards from the street towards, towards the rear. Photograph one is looking northwest, and it shows what the site in relation to the street. Photograph two, also looking northwest, shows the existing wooden sheds which are along the boundary with number nine. Photograph three, on the bottom left, is looking towards the existing workshop. And photograph, photograph four, looking northeast, shows the workshop in relation to number thirty-eight A. This is taken from, yeah, sorry, yeah, this is taken from Bearcroft. Photograph five is looking southwest toward the workshop from the adjacent rear parking area, which serves number thirty-six down to twenty-six the street. This shows the proposed site plan as part of the application. It also includes an extension to the garden area of number thirty-eight, which you can see in a, oh, see in the hashed part here, so it's quite a small extension. The proposed dwelling would be two stories in form and orientated south. No windows proposed on the southern or northern elevations at first floor level. The street scene, sorry, the street scene shows the existing and the proposed street scene from Bearwood cottages. I just, on this, I'd like to draw your attention to the similarity in scale to number nine bare wood. In conclusions, in conclusion, officers consider that the proposal would provide one two bedroom dwelling in a sustainable location with appropriate parking provision. It condense the built form and site, ensuring the continued use of the site as residential, and it would also improve the amenity area of the existing dwelling at number thirty-eight. The matters of judgment, sorry, the matters of principle are the principle of of development, the location of development, highways impacts on traffic and parking, impact on the ancient woodland buffer, effect on the SBA, and impact on the conservation area. The matters of judgment are design and impact on visual amenity, impact on residential amenity, and the standard of accommodation and provision of amenity and play space. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Members.
I'd just like to draw councillors' attention to the update sheet on this one, which includes the objection from Farnham Town Council and the officer's response. The application site's located on the western side of Old Park Lane. It comprises a barn and an area of formal gardens in association with the host property. Adjacent, adjacent to the west of the site is the host property, a semi-detached dwelling with ancillary outbuilding. Photograph one, looking south, shows the existing barn to be demolished and the adjoining store, oh, and the adjoining store, which you can see set down slightly from the ridge height of the main, of the main barn area here. Photograph two, looking west, shows the existing track with the access site on the left hand side. Photograph three, looking west, shows the relationship to the host dwelling and the and the ancillary building. This is the ancillary building here, serving the host dwelling. And photograph four, looking west again, shows the eastern elevation of the barn, and you can see the the roof of the store here as well. These are the existing elevations of the barn, and the proposed elevations, which you can see, are of identical form and scale. In conclusion, officers consider that the proposal would provide a, provide one three bedroom dwelling in a sustainable location with appropriate parking provision. The matters of principle are the principle of development, location of development, highways and impact on traffic and parking, impact on trees, impact on ancient woodland, and effect on the SBA. The massive judgment are the design and impact on visual amenity, impact on residential amenity, standard of accommodation and provision of amenity and play space, and the impact on the landscape. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Chris. Members.
councillor Hyman. Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'm one of ward members for Castle Ward, where this is cited. We do have an objection from the town council, and I respect that greatly. I mean, I'm, I appreciate there are also objections from from local residents on this, and I can understand it's particularly being outside of the built up area boundary and not in accordance with the neighbourhood plan. I take the officer's point that this is not considerably different to what is there at the moment, but it is a change of use, and it and it will introduce windows, and it will introduce other issues where I I'm not, I'm not entirely happy with with any building underneath Farnham Castle, you know, it's in the in the vicinity of the of Farnham Castle and the old park. So I find this one very difficult, but I think, I mean, obviously, as as far as the habitats directive is concerned, in the absence of an appropriate assessment, that means in the absence of bird, one with bird numbers and mitigation considered, I cannot vote in favour of this. But I I think that judging by the the standards which would have to be applied under Article six four, because, you know, looking forward, those in fact give us far greater leeway in protecting heritage assets and and applying the imperative reasons of overriding public interest, and that's up to us, so we're not limited by 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 planning policy. On balance, because of its location, I think, unless I hear anything which is convinced, convinces me otherwise in the debates, then I'm going to have to vote against this because of the location, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Coburn.
Yes, for the first minute or so, I was in total agreement with councillor Hyman. We went on the site visit to have a look at this some time back, this area, and of course, in forming the neighbourhood plan, we have walked every inch of of the town. And I can't, I just cannot support this at all. In fact, I'm very disappointed in the officer's attitude and their response to the town council's objections. We have tried to be very proactive in our plan, and we are out, as you know, at the partial review to get the extra houses. We're not anti-development, but we have got certain areas that we want to protect and enhance, and these are very clearly set out. And in fact, we have gone out and commissioned yet more landscape evidence to back up some of what we have said in the past. We have got some beautiful landscape in Farnham, and we also have some landscape that's not necessarily as beautiful, but which serves a purpose. This is unbuilt on land. It's as simple as that. And the fact that there is a barn of some kind there does not mean that it can be converted necessarily into housing, or should be. It would be, as far as I'm concerned, an isolated building out into the countryside, which is precisely what the built up area boundary and indeed national policy is trying to avoid. Turn this barn into a house, and we know what happens. We're having this the whole time. We knew as soon as we put in a built up area boundary that this would be one of the problems. If you look on Google Maps and look down, this is isolated. You can see in in some of the plans that there seems to be a natural linkage to the the sort of host property, as it were, but if you actually look, you can see how isolated it is in the countryside. And although the changes are meant to be sympathetic in design, you still have all the trappings of a building in open countryside that we have sought so hard to protect. And I just feel this is a step too far. I think it is contrary to policies FNP one and FNP ten of the neighbourhood plan. I don't think it conserves or enhances the landscape, and I do think it will have a detrimental effect, impact on the old park. So as far as I am concerned, the neighbourhood plan is part of the development plan, and that these proposals are contrary to that development plan. And I really cannot support this at all. I'm sorry, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Fraser.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I couldn't believe it when I saw on page one hundred and eleven that town council had no comments received written against it. Is this a breakdown in officer communications? Because I recall in Farnham Town Council Planning and Licensing Committee, we we discussed this fully. The points raised by councillor Hyman, councillor Coburn were thoroughly addressed, and we objected most strongly, and yet it's not downhill on the agenda paper. Got, someone's updated it.
councillor Ward, please.
Thank you, Chairman. As I read through this report, I was really very encouraged by it. If I can direct councillors to page one hundred and twelve, which says paragraph seventy-nine of the NPPF advises that local planning authority should avoid isolated homes in the countryside unless there are special circumstances such as, and it goes on to list, I think, about half a dozen consideration, qualities, sorry, conditions, all of which this building totally fails to meet. So I thought, oh, this is great, they're going to check it out. So we then went on to, I think, the next page, yes, one hundred and thirteen, towards the bottom. Policy FNP ten of the Farnham neighbourhood plan states that outside the built up area boundary, priority should be given to protecting the countryside from inappropriate development. We have a barn in the country. Sorry, I have pressed my button. We have a barn in the country, and barns belong in the country. That doesn't mean that every barn should be converted to a house. This is against all the bits of the NPPF. It's totally It's totally against the Farnham neighbourhood plan and I think it's diabolical that it's been recommended.
Thank you. Officers, do you want to say anything before we move to the recommendation?
Just in terms of the isolation, the, the way isolation is kind of determined in relation to the NPPF is about the proximity to the settlement and to services contained within the settlement. In this particular location, we are very, very close to the settlement of Farnham and within walking distance of all the facilities it provides. In addition to this, housing has been granted on Old Park Lane at appeal and it hasn't been found to be isolated. So I would advise councillors to avoid refusing this, this application on grounds of isolation. Impact on landscape is a much more subjective judgment that councillors are of course able to come to their own judgment on. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. In terms of recommendation then, members. Recommendation is that subject conditions 1 to 13 and informative 1 to 3, permission be granted. Those in favour, please show. Those against?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Can I have an alternative recommendation, please? councillor Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman, that permission be refused.
councillor Hyman, you're seconding. Thank you. And now the reasons, please.
With councillor Coburn, do the neighbourhood plan pass off it? I would suggest that we, strongly suggest that we add the no appropriate assessment as there's no bird numbers in order to protect our interests, as it's our strongest reasons and we should always use, use our strongest reasons. It would be there anyway in terms of being a stand-by reason for refusal in effect because obviously there wouldn't be a section 1 or 6 agreement anyway. But I think we should strengthen that slightly. But I, I would like, I'm, I'm not sure whether an inspector would look at isolation the way that we see it on this or whether, whether it goes with the officers. I'd like to know what, how much discretion we have in that respect. I mean, I know that, you know, habitats issues are not sustainable, it does not come under the presumption in favour of sustainable development and therefore by definition, I suppose, from the NPPF, it is not sustainable development and, and that is, you know, as far as I'm concerned, a strong reason. But can I please, if you're going to tell us that you strongly recommend that we don't refuse anything ever on habitats issues and that you're saying we really mustn't refuse this on isolation, then can you give me some, some real strong reasoning on that? Because those, those are the reasons I'd use. Thank you.
Yes, I mean, I would argue that it lies in the face of, or is completely contrary to, policy FNP10 of the neighbourhood plan. The way it's phrased in the report is that it's on the outskirts. I mean, it's, it's outside the built-up area boundary and it's in an area of high landscape sensitivity. I'd have to do my, my double check on the exact one, but I think it's high in sensitivity and value. And in that case, the only development that should be allowed is a development that enhances that. And I'm afraid converting a barn into a barn-like house is not going to improve the, the look and the landscape. So I, I think you've got to turn it down on FNP and I think one as well because the, you know, the design again is integral to every single policy in the neighbourhood plan and FNP10. I know that the officers have dismissed those on the update sheet, but, you know, I think they are policies that we should be upholding.
Louise.
Just in response to councillor Hyman, in this particular instance, the legal agreement has been signed and appropriate assessment has been carried out. And for that reason, officers do not consider it would be sustainable to refuse it on the impact on the SBA, particularly given that Natural England have raised no objection to the proposal. In relation to isolation, should members wish to refuse it on isolation, they of course can. I would just like to caution them that, yeah, we have lost costs on a scheme further up Old Park Lane. And in my opinion, my advice would be to councillors to stick to the impact on the landscape character, which is a subjective judgment, and I consider that the council could make a strong case for an appeal against that. On that basis, my recommendation, following the comments that you've made, is that the proposal would fail to protect and enhance the landscape character of the, of the Old Park area, conflicting with policies FNP1 and FNP10 of the Farnham neighbourhood plan, policies TD1 and RE1 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2018 and the relevant paragraphs of the NPPF, if you can allow me to insert those afterwards. That reason for refusal would be strengthened further if members could identify some particular reasons why they consider this proposal would fail to protect and enhance the landscape character. And if you can, we could add those in and that would strengthen that, that reason further. Thank you, Chairman.
Chair.
It's, it's one of those difficult things, isn't it, Louise? When we're looking at green belts, we have to assess the harm that that building is going to have in, in terms of the openness of the green belt. Here we have an area that we wish to protect as the old park. It's got high sensitivity, historic value and putting, you know, a dwelling in it is bound to change the nature of that, you know, and I don't know how you put it into words and it's always been difficult with the green belts, you know, actually assess the amount of harm to the green belt of, of any development. But, you know, there has to be natural harm. It's not necessarily the fact that the barn itself will be changed, it's all the clutter that goes with living. You know, it's the bins, it's the bikes, it's the, you know, the trampoline, it's all these other things that go with residential development. Residential development will change completely the nature of that area in an area that we wish to protect for its high sensitive, high sensitivity and historic value.
Yes, it's changed the character, hasn't it? It would change the character of the Old Park area and I think that's all, that comes under what we've already run through, those policies, the RE1, particularly of the local plan. But if, under FNP10, I mean, can we reiterate that this would not enhance the landscape value under E, part E of FNP1? Under part C, it would not conserve and enhance the landscape and scenic beauty of the AONB and AGLV. Actually, does, does that apply here? Yes, AGLV does, doesn't it? And, and D particularly, would not retain the landscape character of and it would have a detrimental impact on the area shown on map if Old Park is having high landscape value and historic value.
Okay. Right, we, I've got councillor Fraser and councillor Ward who want to add something.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I would cite the proximity to the castle, which hasn't been mentioned to date, and I certainly wouldn't want an old farm a mile up, 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 Old Park Lane on a contaminated site, which is Brownfield, to be used as precedence against.
councillor Ward.
Yeah, I may have misheard or not heard it, but one of the points we wanted to stress was that it was outside the built-up area as defined in the Farnham neighbourhood plan.
Thank you. Louise, are we, are we there?
Yeah, that's, that's very helpful and I think those, those comments have helped strengthen that, that reason for refusal. So I would recommend the proposal by reason of the changing character as a result of the change of use and the associated residential paraphernalia would fail to protect and enhance the landscape character of the Old Park area and the AGLV outside the built-up area boundary of Farnham. The proposal would therefore conflict with policy FNP1, FNP10 of the Farnham neighbourhood plan, policies TD1 and RE1 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2018 and, and as I say, the relevant paragraphs of the NPPF that I can insert tomorrow if you'll allow me.
councillor Coburn, are you?
No.
Members, I think that's fairly comprehensive. The motion is to refuse. Those in favour, please show.
Yeah, that's unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you very much, members. That completes our meeting. Safe drive home.